Something amazing happened. We were able to get some knowledge. A lot of times, kids don't learn because they haven't been taught. So they were taught tonight, and they did learn some valuable things about politics, the process, and how to empower themselves to help us be successful.
Jarvis Washington, the president of Black Lives Matter Restoration Pope Inc. I'm also running for commissioner at large in Lakeland.
Hello, everybody. I am Allison Lewis, better known as Al. I am running for Lakeland City Commissioner, Southwest District C seat.
My name is Dr. Shandell Terrell. I'm a candidate for the City of Lakeland, Southeast District D.
It was my pleasure to emcee this wonderful event. I am Jasimar Bennett. I am a mother, educator, and host, and I absolutely love this forum. So I hope you stay involved in the community and stay on top of your politics.
Thank you.
Washington Park, Forte Projects, Lincoln Court. I attended Austin State, Polk County Elementary School, Crystal Lake Junior High School.
Take us to Crystal Lake.
Okay.
How was Mr. Terrell at Crystal Lake?
Oh, Crystal Lake.
Middle School.
I was quiet, a hard worker. I wanted to achieve a lot in life because my parents told me when I was in 3rd grade, they told me they didn't have the funds to send me to college. So I went ahead and tried to come up with a plan to earn a way to college. So I felt that my way, the quickest way for me, was the athletic scholarship. So I tuned into the athletics at Crystal Lake Junior High School at the time, where I played football, basketball, track, and tennis. So at Crystal Lake Junior High School, once I graduated from 7th... At that time, junior high school was 7th, 8th, 7th grade, 8th grade, and 9th grade. But now it's 7th and 8th. So when I graduated from those grades on to...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. When I transitioned from Crystal Lake Junior High School into Lakeland Senior High School, I had the opportunity to go straight to varsity and not play JV football. So Castle, Mr. Bill Castle, went ahead and transitioned me up to varsity football, and I was the second-string fullback, worked my way into the starting rotation as a sophomore. So the opportunities were there to play. I had to work extremely hard. Being a sophomore, the seniors, the juniors, and seniors wanted to beat up on me on the football field, which they did, but they made me better. When I say beat up on me, it wasn't physically. It was just toughening me up a little bit, so to say, to get me on their level so I can be the best that I can be. And then another thing I did too, along going back to Crystal Lake Junior High School, I found out in my 9th grade year about the Scholastic Altitude Test, which is the SAT, and the American Collegiate Test, which is the ACT. These are the gatekeeper assessment tests that will get you into colleges. So I started, believe it or not, in my 9th grade year, started... I took the practice test in my 9th grade year because I wanted it that bad to make it out of Lakeland. I just didn't want to sit around after graduation and be one of those folks who sit under the tree. And I just wanted to do something productive with myself, and that was my prayer to God. I said, "God, make sure whatever I do, I want it to be the best at it." I wanted to be successful in my academics because I knew the education piece was the only way I was going to be able to go to college. So once I got into high school, that was very important. In my 10th grade year, I took the Scholastic Altitude Test, which is the SAT, and the American Collegiate Test, which is the ACT, until I passed it in my senior year. With the pressure mounting at that point in time, I continued to press on in my academic system. I made sure I had all the required courses in my junior year. So in my senior year, I wanted to be a smooth transition and a smooth ride. I really wanted to enjoy my senior year.
My chair.
Okay. I took all those hard courses in my 9th grade year, the English 1s, 2s, and 3s, the mathematics courses, Spanish 1s, 2s, and 3s, all the sciences. I took all those major courses that were needed so my senior year could be a much successful senior year, which it was.
So just one second.
Okay.
So at 15, when I'm here, that you are quiet.
Yes.
But you are focused.
I was very focused.
You know that your gateway into what you want to do later on in life, your ticket is through athletics. However, he's smart enough to know that athletics is not just going to be the only way that he's going to get there. He knows that he has to have his education behind that, too. So that's a very good foundation because now we're looking at you now. And now we want to know about you as the man that you're standing before us now. So we've got a 15-year-old. Take us to who you are today.
Okay, who am I today? When I was at Ark University, everything... Well, in my senior year at Lakeland Senior High School, I broke several records, rushing records, touchdowns, you name it. It was a great, it was a great opportunity for me. And I assumed that I was going to go pro because everybody said, "Oh, man, you're going to go pro. You're going to be right behind Ray Lewis." And I said, "Okay, I'm going to be right behind Ray Lewis." And when I went to Auburn, God had a different plan for me. Diagnosed with a pinched nerve in my right shoulder, so I had to transfer to Florida African-Christian Mechanical University, commonly known as Fordham University. And I majored in education, graduated in 2001. Then I went on to earn my Master of Science degree in educational leadership from Nova Southeast University, and a doctoral degree in education with a concentration in higher education leadership with a minor in urban education from Nova Southeast University. Now, during that time, I didn't waste no time between the degrees. I did not because I did not want to get lax. And my mom pushed me to earn my master's degree, really, because she said, "Well, son, when you're going to go back to earn your master's degree, leave it." Every single day, I promise you, she pushed it. And then my father, my late father, he said, "Son, you need to go ahead and get a higher degree than a master's degree because that's not going to do you any good." So that's when I went ahead and pushed myself within that year of graduating on my master's, master's science degree. I went ahead and that next year enrolled into the doctoral program at Nova Southeast University, and that was the journey. That was a true journey. There were times that I had to study from day in. Like at this time, I would get my work out and right after work. I would go home, shower. I would be on the computer from 8:00 until sometime 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning at work.
Well...
Yes.
Dedication.
Yes. It was serious. Because I did not want to be a doctoral candidate, all but dissertation. Yes. And that's very important when you go through a doctoral program. It's good to say that you're going through it. I didn't vocalize mine. When I was going through the doctoral program, nobody did not know that I had a doctoral degree until Dr. Samuel Bennett, a professor at Southeast University, came up to Crystal Lake Middle School and said, "Hey, ma'am, please speak to Dr. Shandell Terrell." They said, "Who?" He said, "Dr. Shandell Terrell." They said, "What? Dr. Shandell Terrell? Yeah, he just earned his degree. He's confirmed." Nobody knew. I didn't want nobody to know until I walked across the stage because not everybody's your friend on your journey, you know? So I had to keep that between God and I, and it was a focus that I had. And that was a God bond as far as earning that doctoral degree and me walking across that stage because it was a tough road. You don't know who your friends are in a doctoral program or any program. So you just have to pretty much be diligent and push through the process. So anything, anything that I earned that's great, I give glory to God because...
Dr. Shandell Terrell, a round of applause. Thank you so much, doctor. Now we have Ms. Al, Allison Lewis. So I would like for you to just introduce us briefly to your 15-year-old self. And then briefly tell us who you are right now as a woman and candidate running for county commissioner. Hi, folks. So I'm a burst of energy. So 15 years old. Oh, my goodness. I am a Harrison Performing Arts alumni, like yourself. At 15 years old, I was at Harrison, and I was a theater major. I grew up right over there, well, I was living at the time, right over there on North Walker Avenue behind the VP. And you could not tell me that I was not going to be an actress. Oh, my goodness. That's all I wanted to do. That's all I thought I could do, right? And that's what it was for me. Nothing else mattered. I just wanted to be on stage. I loved the arts. I involved myself in the arts, and that's what it was for me. And that was the 15-year-old Allison. I was a true thespian. I loved the work of art because if you think about it, just think about it. Everybody knows how to spell the word "earth," right? Okay, take out "art" in "earth." What do you have? Ew, right? So I mean, without the arts, this world will be ew, right? Just something I thought I'd throw in there. Nonetheless, so where am I now? Wow. So that journey, you know, I grew up, I tell it like this, right? I grew up off of Summer View Avenue behind George Jenkins High School, and then I finished over here at North Walker Avenue, right? Went to Harrison Performing Arts Center, graduated from there. And then I matriculated on to Washington DC to the Hilltop Howard University, right? A lot of us know Howard by our now-current vice president Kamala Harris. I was in the College of, it was the College of Arts and Sciences now. It is the College of Fine Arts. Great. I'm glad they made that separation. I was a theater, I was a theater major with a concentration in acting. Well, when I got to Howard, they told me I was a horrible actor, right? So that just burst my bubble really quick. And so then I went into Theater Arts Administration. And what I found is that we have a lot of black performers. We have a lot of black dancers, a lot of black actresses, a lot of black singers. But none, you have a very slim number of black theatrical producers. At the time on Broadway, when I was doing my research, you had two black producers on Broadway, and we were wondering why all of these black artists was not getting jobs. How come you don't see many black plays on Broadway? Well, that is because you only had two black producers at the time. And so that's the field that I had went into, right? So as I'm a trip to the A.D. Howard, I ended up getting sick and going to Virginia State University in Petersburg, Virginia, where I ultimately graduated from, right? And as a theatrical producer, you need money. So what else was left for me to do? I mean, I was a college graduate, right? So I had to tell my mother something. I definitely couldn't tell her I was coming back home and sit in the house and do nothing. Oh, no. So I had to come up with a quick plan, and my plan was law school. I thought about it. I love to read. I write really well, and I think, right? And I know how to play chess, right? Because the difference between chess and checkers, chess is strategy, checkers is moves, right? Chess is life. So I said, "Whoa, that's all I need for this law school," right? So I went ahead to law school, right? Finished that, Berry School of Law. Great. Got out of there. Then, uh-oh, come time for another thing. Got to take that ball. I said, "Oh, my God, I don't like chess." But just so happened, the federal government, they had a program at my school. I went and interviewed for three positions in DC. And I got all three, and I just chose that one. I did that for two years, right? Then I decided, well, I'm just 27 now. Then I decided, I said, "Well, I want to get into business ownership." Because in reality, working a 9-to-5 is not going to put you in that tier where you want to go, especially being a black woman in America, and I'm just going to, right? And so I decided to open up a Subway franchise. I think it was the worst mistake I could have ever made, but it was a lot of money. I did it, and I'm proud to say I did it. Do I regret it? Yeah, it's neither here nor there. Thank God for the experience, right? So did that, and then I got offered to teach. So now I'm a teacher. I teach world history, right? And I love it. I love children. I love, I love every aspect of it. But at the end of the day, one thing I understand is that not only does children need advocates, but our people need advocates too, right? And which is why I'm running for Lakeland City Commissioner, Southwest District C seat, because I realized we need representation at the table. We see a city growing, but at the end of the day, let's go ahead and face the reality. We're not always included in the plans. And in order for us to be included in the plans, we have to sit around the table, ladies and gentlemen. And so I'm putting myself out there to run, not just for me, because, you know, again, this is not about me. It's about you all, right? Because at the end of the day, you all need shoulders to stand on. And so I'm lending you all my shoulders to stand on because somebody would need their shoulders, right? And so that's all I have for now. I'm Allison. You call me Allison Al, or you can say, "Hey, that girl over there, we can laugh at her," okay? All right. Thanks, folks. Thank you, Ms. Al, that girl over there. I want to say that. Thank you so much. And last but certainly not least, we have Mr. Washington, Mr. Jarvis. Washington, I want to know, what was Jarvis like at the age of 15? And then who is Jarvis now as the man, Mr. Washington, running for city commissioner?
Okay, how's everybody doing? All right. For one, at 15, I was in Jarvis. My name was J. Doe.
J. Doe.
At 15, I was a cool, smooth dude. Not at 15. J was for Jarvis. Doe was for W, U. I thought it was cool. It's a little wordplay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so at 15, if I can be completely honest with you guys, at 15, I thought I had it all figured out. I thought I was going to play sports. I didn't know what I was going to play. At 15, I was in 10th grade. At the time, I was playing baseball. I was playing basketball. I was playing football. And I was already getting college offers in baseball. I was pretty good. Mr. Williams can tell, can tell you, I was pretty good in baseball. So as far as academics at the time, because of who my mom was, she stayed on top of me, I was very, I was exceptional in academics as well. But as far as having the drive and determination to do anything other, for anyone other than myself, I really didn't have it. And a lot of the times, let me steal one of your papers. This right here is what hurt me a lot when I was 15 years old. I seen this, and I said, "Ah, yeah, that's a lot of reading. I'm not going to, I'm just going to..." And not reading through the full passages or not fully engaging in the things that was important at the time because I thought I had it figured out at 15 is what set me back short-term. Like Al said, I'm 27 too. I just turned 27. My birthday was only 20, I mean, 11th of May. So I'm 20.
That's my sister's birthday.
Yeah, that's my birthday as well, too. So happy birthday to me, everybody.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. Thank you. So it set me back for a while because I wasn't really focusing on or seeing the bigger picture because I thought I had it figured out. And then one of the things happened to me that happened to a lot of good athletes. I got hurt, just like Mr. Shandell did. I got hurt. You know, scholarships started to get taken away, and I just felt my world crashing down because I hadn't prepared for anything outside of playing sports. And that happened for me at a young age. I was in my senior year. You know, I had scouts looking at me from Clemson. I had offers from the minor league MLB for the Yankees to play baseball. You know, and then I had a high ankle sprain, torn Achilles in my, I mean, torn tendon to my Achilles. So just that fast, it was taken away from me. Had I not been engaged in school, like on the back end of that, even though I wasn't thinking about my future, I knew it was more I had to do. In that time, Mr. Williams would tell you, I was a part of almost every club. I was a part of student government. My senior year, I was senior class president. I was also the homecoming king. Junior year, I was junior class vice president. I was treasurer one year. So I worked my way up through the ranks just because I wanted to do something and not just go home every day. Every day, I'd go home, I'm bored. I wind up doing something. I'll go hang out with my friends. So I got the transition from wanting to do something more than just what everybody else was doing. So I started staying at school. We had the volleyball games at Kathleen. I used to sit up at the top of... We had a structure at the top of the school where you play music at. So I used to ask, "Can I go up there and play DJ for them?" So I just tried to keep myself engaged in school as much as possible, not even including the academics, just engaged in school to keep myself outside, away from the streets. Now, fast forwarding, I went to Southeast University. I didn't finish Southeast University. I didn't get my degree. I was there for two years. I was part of the first football, first football team that Southeast University had. That was back in 2015. I was registered the first year. Two years until me playing, my mother, she kind of got real ill. And then my father as well, too. That's when he had to go into a nursing home. He had dementia, and my mother had cancer at the time. My sister was at Florida State. She was gone, and my niece was at the house. So my mom was at the house with the baby, taking care of baby every day. You know, my father going through health issues, my mother as well. So I left school. I went to go get a job. And I, you know, just like everybody else, I was working a 9-to-5 every day, two jobs, three jobs. My first job was at a batting cage when I was in high school. My second job, when I got out of high school, was at Walmart. My third job was at Pizza Hut. You know, so I didn't have any fancy jobs. So for the longest I had those 9-to-5, $9 an hour, here it is. And then when I went to college, I seen life differently. I went to Southeast University. I also went to Benedict College in South Carolina. I was there on a partial baseball scholarship. But I came back when my mom got sick. I was only there for a semester. So I came back, and I was in Southeast, and that's when I was there for two years. When that happened, I was out of school for about six months. And I don't remember exactly what happened, but I just knew the world was on fire. Someone had died. The world was on fire. And then I felt very called to want to do something. I went to Tampa, Florida, where it was a Black Lives Matter protest. I was, maybe I was about 20 at the time. I was 20 at the time. I went to Tampa, Florida, to a Black Lives Matter protest. I talked to the leaders there, like, "Hey, I want to be involved. What can I do? What's the next step?" And then I told them what I was trying. They was like, "Hey, we don't have anybody in Polk County. How would you like to advocate for the people in Polk?" And I said, "Hey, well, when I get back, we're going to talk to people. Let's see what we can do." And then off-rim, I talked to a couple of people, and we started getting the ball rolling. I did my first protest when I was 21, and I was advocating on behalf of Black Lives Matter. We broke away from the national organization. I created my own rules, mission statement, laws, plans, and agenda to tailor the black community here in Polk County. Fast forward now, that's, I'm 27, so that was six years ago. Fast forward now, we've been doing everything from marching and rallying to help change political policies that don't reflect equal opportunities for all people. On the big end of that, we advocate big on economics. I'm going to focus big on economics. It's all about what you own and control. That's the goal. The goal is to own and control your own resources. I'm also going to focus big on, as far as the candidacy. I'm also going to focus on big on, right now, the housing market. We're going to focus transition from what is considered low-income housing and what's considered affordable housing. We're going to work on self-sufficiency programs to help build up the character of these individuals to help them get out of these situations. We're going to also try to create different opportunities for individuals in the health, I'm sorry, in the education system to make it more or less biased towards the individuals that look like us. So it's a lot of things that we want to focus on. I want to focus on, let's review some of the laws that's been enacted for over 50 to 60 years. Let's see if they still play a role on our everyday life.
Yes. Round of applause for Mr. Jarvis. Because he is on fire, right? And so I'm going to keep him lit at that particular point, but I want to kind of put a pin in where we are right now. And so just going back to the political side of things, because I don't know if you in the audience am like I was, but I just remember having an internship at the Washington Center in Washington DC. I was, I have degrees. One of them is in broadcast journalism. And so I wanted to be this great and grand journalist. And, you know, I had the opportunity to do some things, but I was not, I did not want to do politics. I didn't want to cover politics. I hated politics. Is there anybody else in the room that's like that? Okay, thank you. I have, I don't feel that way now, but I just felt that way. Politics gets me so emotional, and I'm just going to be very real with you. It gets me emotional, and then I shut down. It's like, I just don't want to deal with this. I don't want to hear it. You know, it's just, it's going to be rigged anyway. They already have their agenda. You know, it's just yada, 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 right? But something that Ms. Lewis brought up, a great point, that this life is a game of chess and not checkers. And you have to make sure that you understand the right moves. And she's right. We have to have representation at the table. And sometimes it's very uncomfortable to sit at that table. And really, if you're not going to speak on behalf of what you believe in, you shouldn't even have a seat. So I know we have three candidates here today who are ready to sit at the table, who are ready to voice what matters in our community, and it is what matters and what's right for everyone. So I heard your wife a little bit, Al. I heard your wife, Jarvis. I didn't necessarily get to hear your wife, Dr. Shandell Terrell. I just wanted to go right into the questions and just ask for a second, two-part question, and if we can keep it maybe under about five minutes, we'll just go with that timeframe. But tell me your why. Why did you get into politics?
Hey, everyone, the reason why I got called a politician is because I served on several boards throughout the state of Lakeland, the Lakeland Citizens Advisory Committee, the Lakeland Budget Advisory Committee, the Lakeland Police Chief, and the Lakeland Division of Transit, currently served on the Lakeland Day Task Force and on the chair of the Lakeland Police Citizens Advisory Board. And serving on those boards and going through leadership programs as far as the board served in Lakeland, serving on boards and committees, focused on leadership, going through that program, too, that city program, Leadership Lakeland, going through that city program, and getting ready to graduate from Leadership Polk, going through those city programs. I said, "I got to take it a step further and be at the table right now." So that's the reason why I started running for the board.
And I'm glad that he mentioned that because when I was doing my research on the election that he was just in because he's actually running against Mike Music. And Mike Music is going to serve, going to serve out the rest of the eight-month period of the person who seat he got because that person got elected to the US House, right? So Mr. Terrell gets to challenge him again in November, which is the big election. But in the election before, just because like what he was saying, because he didn't get that 50% that he needed, which he was ahead of Mike Music. He actually beat him the first time. But then when the runoff came, they were really, really tight. Like Mike Music only got like 50.7% of the votes. So listen to how tight that race is. And if you looked at the data behind that, of our voting population in Lakeland, anybody want to take a guess at how many people came out percentage-wise? I'm going to just go to the audience. How many people you think who could vote in the election? How many people, this is not black, this is not just white, this is not just any sort of, of the entire population of voters in Lakeland. How many people do you think showed up for that vote?
You're talking about for the special election runoff?
For the runoff.
Okay.
For the runoff. You know, we knew, we knew you were on fire for the special election, but for the runoff, how many people do you think voted?
About 80%.
About 80%? Not even close. But that's a good try? It's lower. It's lower. How many people? 30%? 30%? That's less than 50%, right? Not even close. It's lower. It's lower. How many people? I'm going to go to an adult, my young adult. Who looks, you know, you're going to be forever young, right? Our Florida Gator? Okay, I have a memory like an elephant with microphones on. All right. How many people do you think showed up?
Uh, 7%.
7%? It was even, I'm just playing. It was higher than 7%. It was higher than 7%. It was higher than 7%. Anybody want to take a guess?
He got his hand up.
Last guess. How many people?
20%.
20%? Listen between 7 and 20%. It was 15, around 15%. Round it up, it was 15%. It was only 15% of Lakeland's total population. And you know what I think happened? I think exactly what he just said happened. You look at the jurisdiction, and you just thought, "Oh, well, this area, that's not hot. That's not where I live, so why do I need to vote?" Well, that was an election that everybody in Lakeland should have come out to vote for. And so that's something, some things that we're going to pick upon because I want you guys to learn these little nuggets dealing with politics. I need you guys to know these things that will help everyone, help the community, especially if you are able to vote. Okay, all right. Ms. Lewis, tell us your why, and then tell us the jurisdiction that you're running, the area that you're running. So I'm going to just keep it honest with you, right? And I'll correct it on the back end if I have to, right? I'm running because I'm tired of the games, right? Well, okay, fine. I'll be nice. I'm running because I got tired, me asking why, and I got tired of people, others, asking why. Specifically, the black and white community, right? Although I'm running to serve all people, but I got tired of us asking why. And the reason why we ask why, the reason why you normally ask why, why do we ask why, students? Because we don't know if we want to what? We want to know. And in order for us to know, ladies and gentlemen, you have to be at the table. So again, out of all my folks, I said, "You know what? I'm going to be that one, right? To run for it, to get to our why, so I can tell my people the why." Because we've been asking why for a mighty long time. Now, let me, since I'm talking to children, right? And I know my adults are in here, but specifically my students, right? Understand this. Government is not top-down. Well, Allison, what do you mean by top-down, right? You students are calling me Ms. Lewis, right? Top-down is federal, state, local, right? Government is down-up, local, state, federal, right? Understand your local government. Your politics is local. So if you can tell me what's going on at the federal, but can't tell me what's going on at the local, we have a problem. And you understand, you really don't know what's going on at the federal, right? So really engulf yourself, right? Nurture yourself into your local, in your local government. And again, ladies and gentlemen, as I say it in my opening, I am running. Think about it like a seed, right? We have to plant this seed in the ground, right? And your seed is what grows. And you know, if you don't nurture the seed, and I'm saying this, our local... is our local government. And if you don't nurture that seed, we're gonna continue to get these dead plants. And that's why we always find that our black and brown community is always on the outs, because we do not nurture our local seed. We do not nurture that seed in the ground, which is why we get dead plants. And that is why I put myself out there, so you all can have shoulders to stand on, so I can be, so I can have an answer to your why, because I know about you all, but I asked a thousand questions. And that's how kind of I have gotten where I got at twenty-seven years old. Because at the end of the day, I need to know the why. And right now, ladies and gentlemen, we're on the outside, they're on the inside, right? And in order for us to understand what's going on on the inside, we need to be on the inside of the table, finding out what's going on. Because let me tell you another secret, they're on the inside on everything on the outside. So you need to have somebody that's transparent and accountable, right? And that's what to be transparent and accountable to you, right? In order for you to grow. And that's all while I'm running. This is, this guess is personal, but it's nothing personal, it's all about you, I'm allowing you all to plant me in the ground, right? To stand on my shoulders, so you all can blossom into beautiful flowers. Thank you.
All right.
The area that I recommend to Southwest District, so, a lot of y'all probably know about Ariana Beach Avenue, oh, and about Harvey Fudding, and all the way coast to air, out to Airport Road, so all, all that area over there, okay? That's why I'm running. But again, again, you can vote, if you are in the city limits, as Ms., Dr. Terrell was saying, if you are in the city limits, vote. You are over eighteen years old, find your local precinct and vote. It doesn't matter what district I'm running for, Dr. Terrell's running for, Washington's running for, it doesn't matter. Come and vote, because when they print, print your ballot, all of us wanna be on there, and you can bubble in. Shandell Terrell, Allison Lewis, Jarvis Washington, right? So, there we go. Tell us a little bit more about your why while you're running, and then what district you're serving, what district you're trying to, uh, win, what are you gonna, what district will you serve?
I've always had a passion for politics. Um, like I said, when I was in high school, I was part of, uh, student government, almost every year at high school. Uh, when I went to college, I, I went to college for political science. Uh, it wasn't until I left college, and I seen, and, to be honest, I was no longer sheltered by the system of institutions, when, whether in middle school, high school, college, in general. Uh, as long as you're in the system, it's hard for you to realize everything that's going around you. So, once I got, or broke away from, uh, the college institution in general, is when I started to notice that I wasn't living the American dream. You know, so, for the longest, once I left college, I didn't want anything to do with politics, because I felt like, had I not left, I would've been doing everything else like every other politician, because I wouldn't have seen the other perception of the people who I would've said I would've been serving. I wouldn't have been too far, uh, disengaged from you guys. So, for, for about four or five years, I didn't want anything to do with politics. When I had structured my life on, you know, being a politician, I structured my life on serving for the people, I had done it so well, and prior to the new age of politics, which is, uh, quote, quote, which means, you know, what are you gonna do for me if I put you in office? You know, I've always stood on the fact of, what do you guys need, and I can give it to you. That's what politics is, we are, uh, devoting on behalf of you guys, like Al said, put me in the ground, you know, uh, so we can ask the questions why. Well, I'm basically saying, what do you guys need, and let me give it to you. That's the purpose of the politician. If you're electing anybody into the office, and they can't give you what you need, and, and, and coming with the agenda, and you just clap your hands, say that sounds great, but no one in the community, uh, uh, contributed to this plan at all, I couldn't really say it's for us. So, me moving forward, even when I become the commissioner, go ahead and, you know, put it out, speaking to the [inaudible]. So, when I become a commissioner, I wish, I, I look to, to, to start a, a commissioner's, uh, advisory board for myself. So the different thing is that we go through, I wanna be informed on a lot of different topics that I do not know about, I'm not gonna sit here and act like I know everything, or I come, I got all the answers, vote for me, I'm gonna get you right. Now, tell me what you need, tell me how I can help, tell me what I don't know. And, I mean, my wife is sitting right here, she know everything that I do and everything, my success has been from me, from me listening. Everything I have been able to do, everything that I've accomplished in my life has been from listening. I got six keys to success. Rule number one is listen, rule number two is stay humble, uh, rule number three is think, rule number four is learn, rule number five is, uh, react, and rule number four, I mean, rule number six is teach. So, you have to listen to, to, to get the information. Uh, you have to stay humble to, to ergur, to reurgertate the information, you have to be able to make sure that you, you get everything that's presented, you may not like everything that someone is saying, or you may not like the person that's telling you, but are you gonna dismiss the whole conversation because you didn't like that one thing? Sometimes you gotta suck it up, especially here in, 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 in politics, uh, uh, you have to suck it up, you have to push past what, because you have to remember, the candidate or the, the next, uh, commissioner sitting next to you, he only got elected because his conference is stupid and a victim, he's gonna represent it. So why am I upset at him for doing what he was elected to do? It's like, y'all, to listen to you guys and move forward, that's rule number two, stay humble. Rule number three, I have to think, you know, what, what was he telling me? You know, what, what don't I know? How can I figure it out? That's, 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 that rolled onto rule number four, with learning. You can't learn unless you ask questions. When you're at school, if you don't know, you're a teacher, what you telling? Every time, after you're gonna explain your example, after you're going through, learning the teaching the lecture, is it any questions? You're a doctor, is it any questions? But everything that you said prior to that, the most important thing that you said was, is it any questions? So it's up to you, if you wanna learn, to engage in that question. Rule number five, you got react. React is the implementation of you learning, everything that you learn, your reaction is your trial and error. Don't be scared to fail. If you never reacted on anything that you learned, did you ever really learn it? Did you? Did you take any time to, to, to put any effort into what you just had to sit through? You gotta sit right through, if, if you, if you don't remember anything, rule number six keys to success. And then you go back, that's your learning process. Now you have, uh, I'm sorry, that's your reaction. Uh, now you have your teach, your, your teach. So how do you know that someone really knows something? If I can teach it to you? If I can't teach it to the next person, I really don't understand what I, what I thought that I understood. I have to be able to teach it to you on this spectrum, if you can't understand it like that, I have to be able to teach it to you this way, and then this way. If not, I don't fully understand the spectrum that I claim I'm advocating on. And that's rule number six. So if you guys don't pull anywhere away from this, you know, those are the principles that I stand on, on an everyday basis.
How many of you know exactly what a commissioner does? Anybody? All right? So we're gonna learn. Everybody said we're about to learn.
We're about to learn.
Everybody said we are about to learn.
We're about to learn.
We are about to learn what in fact a commissioner does. Now, one of the things that I really, really liked before we even got started today, because when I do a bit like this, I like to have my eyes and my ears very keenly attuned to what's going on around me. And one of the things that I did, see, one of the things that I did here was great camaraderie with these candidates. Yes, they are all running for different parts of our city, however, the common ground is that they're each trying to get to the same goal. And one of the things that I thought was the dopest ever, and I'm sorry, that's just my little term, that's just what I use, one of the most phenomenal things that I heard this group do was to chat with one another. They were asking questions to one another, um, Mr. Terrell was giving information, information, kind of like insider information to this group of politicians, and I just wanna say, that was, that was an amazing thing that you did, and I think that's what we should all do. Because he has a different level of expertise when it comes to politics. You've heard all the things that he's done in terms of being on the emerge, um, in the emerge leadership of Lakeland, being in, um, in, on several different advisory boards, and, and that's your way, that's your big in, because then you meet the key players in our city, in our district, you link yourselves to these people, you link yourself to these white, black people, and then you hear their conversations, you hear what's important to them, you hear the movers and who are the shakers in our city. That's a chess move, but that's also just being smart, that's, that's knowing what you're doing. He knows that he wants to run for commissioner, so why not do that? That's what you're supposed to do, right? So, I just want to throw to each of you who wanna do it, and actually, if whoever wants to answer the question, actually, can you explain to our you what in fact a commissioner does? Fifty dollars, okay?
Right. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out, it's a phenomenal experience, I think we're gonna have to do a, a part two, so, cause there's so much, um, knowledge here, and it looks like the students are scholastically astute, listening, and I know some of them have to make it up for makeup testing, um, tomorrow, a bit proper in every day, and we have me out of it.